It's 9:01. Let's stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you this morning and turn this meeting over to you, ask for your guidance on each matter. We pray for those families impacted in the shooting in Antioch, Tennessee, that you would comfort them, help them to find justice here in the capture of this shooter. We pray for Sheriff Ingram's grandson, that you will heal his eye, that you will help him to feel better and not be so sick from these treatments, but we pray ultimately for a complete cure. We pray for our county, for our taxpayers, for our employees, and we just thank you, Lord, that you've given us this opportunity to play this role for this county. We just continue to pray for your blessings upon Mount Pleasant and Titus County, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it is 9:03, and today is the 23rd day of April. This is our second meeting of the month of April 2018. We will begin with our public comment opportunity. If there's anyone here that wants to address the court on non-agenda items, doesn't look like it, so I will move then to item number two, considering possibly approve minutes from our last meeting, two weeks ago, April 9th.
Make motion to approve minutes.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve that set of minutes.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Joyce, for preparing those. And now, item number three is our regular report from road engineer Roger Ledbetter. Welcome, Roger.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Hi. We started working on County Road 1065 last week. This is the first road on the seal coat prep list. We added wrap to this road and blended it with the existing materials that were on the roadway. We have completed recompacting the blending material with our soil compactor and finished the surface using a maintainer and pneumatic roller. We started priming the surface last Friday and plan on finishing the prime work hopefully earlier this week, if weather permits. The prime surface will need to cure about seven days before we can seal coat it, so hopefully if we have good weather, we can seal coat 1065 in about two weeks.
What's the distance on that one?
It's like .7 miles. The weekend before last, we had a structure washout on County Road 3345. This was a six-foot corrugated metal pipe. We were able to salvage the existing pipe and relay it. We used some of the coal mix we had made in Precinct 2 mixing field, backfilled the structure. The structure still had water running through the channel, so we used that coal mix. We're able to get the road open back up by the end of the work day on that Monday, which has worked out pretty good. This is a school bus route, and that's who we heard about the road closure from in the first place. It's from the school. We started working on County Road 1200 from just north of the Hall Road Bridge to the box covered by the state. This is the second section of roadway on the seal coat prep list. We cleaned out the ditches on this section and plan to start some cover work hopefully this week, and maybe start working on some base fairies this week. Last week, we hauled wrap to County Road 1915 and County Road 1920. We mixed wrap and flash base into the existing roadway on a section of County Road 1920 and recompacted roadway with a soil compactor. This week, we will start working on mixing in the wrap with the existing surfaces on sections of 1915 and recompacting the roadway. I think Dana's familiar with these. We had some real bad sections up there. We got a lot of oil field traffic on these on 1915 and on 1920, and our road was just about completely tore up up there, so we had to do something with it. Okay, and hopefully we can get some little sections done. You know that section, Dana, that's down there, it's a clay hill, down there on the, close to the east end, close to the last houses to the west, we're going to rework at Clay Hill there. And we also plan on working on some cross drainage structures throughout the county this week. We've got several of them that need to be put in. Hopefully, we'll get some good weather so we can get them put in. We started side cutting again this morning. I know Dana had some roads that she had complaints on, and I think Jimmy, you've got a couple we got complaints on too. We'll start on those, but hopefully we can continue side cutting. Our three new hires started this morning. That was Cookie Freeman, Larry Craddock, and Robert Perryman. I put one of them on the side cutter, and the other two were hauling wrap this morning. We have a water truck that is ready for delivery. It is at the Arch Tech Truck Center. They will not deliver it until we get a check to put in their hands when it's delivered, so we're going to need a live check. Is that a problem? Is that something we can get pretty quick?
I have the VO and stamping that before. I'll have all of y'all sign off on it, and we can go ahead and check this after we've been approved. It's $48,000. Now, is this the final, or is there another? That's what we did the VO for, but is that the final cost?
Yes, that's the final cost.
That included that whatever surcharge that you were referring to last time?
Yes. Yeah, they actually, I think we got by without getting the surcharge put on to it.
Okay. And this is where, Textrican?
Yes, Arch Tech Truck Center.
How's the quality of this one compared to other ones you looked at?
I think this is going to be a good truck. It's a 2013. It's going to have a new tank, new pump system on it. I think it was a good deal.
Good.
Don't use this new truck and my old truck?
Yes.
Water?
Yeah, we'll keep using all the oil trucks and water trucks that we've got right now.
What's the earliest you can put down any of this seal coat?
If the weather stays warm, I'm hoping we can start sealing in two weeks to get 1065 sealed.
But it hadn't been warm, so you got to wait until, what's your targeting? Is it like 70 degrees at night?
I'd like, it needs to be at least 50. It'd be better if it was 70 at night, but you can shoot it at 50. You're just taking a little more of a chance at shooting it at 50 at night. But you got to remember-
I always did 70.
Yeah, every road we're working on, we have traffic running on it. So, the sooner we can get it sealed up to keep water out of the surface, the better off we're on it. So sometimes you got to weigh the risk versus the traffic.
Just need a little warm spell then.
Yeah, need a little warm spell.
Anything else?
I think that's about it. Do y'all have any questions?
Roger, I anticipate either this week or next week, those guys that was cutting up that drag line, as soon as they holler at me, I'll call you, and you can meet with them and go down that road.
Okay.
Me too. I'll be glad to.
And that's Dale, that you've been talking to?
Dale said he can call me. They don't like him.
Okay. Well, hopefully this rain didn't set them back too much. But yeah, we got a bunch of holes in that road they need to fix. And they said they will do it. They will get a contractor, or they'll fix it themselves, or are we fixing it and they're paying us?
I would anticipate they'll hire somebody. I don't really know. Usually, they get the hired brothers. Give them the lowest quote, because they're paying for what's they're getting. Get anything they want, I guess.
Okay.
Any questions for Roger? All right, I'll let you go early.
I'd like to give him a miss, Judge, number seven down there, 25 mile prior to speaking.
I guess we need him on four anyway, so yeah, we'll hit seven after four.
Okay, because he's been down there and looked at it, and I went down there the other day, so.
All right, well, let's move on then to item number four. Considering possibly approve a resolution to request a waiver for local match fund participation related to the off-system bridge program project. Let me read this resolution to you. Do you have any background? Give us a little background information on what this is and how this works, would you?
Okay, this is part of the federal off-system bridge replacement program. It's actually funded by the federal highway government, but the way it's set up, the feds pay 80%, the state pays 10%, and the county pays 10%. And what you're doing here, the state will let you have a waiver for your 10%, but on your waiver, you've got to show them that you're going to do an equivalent match-type work. And their equivalent match work is anything dealing with drainage. So I think we can clean out ditches, and we can replace cross drainage structures, which we probably do a good bit every year anyhow. Now, I think we have three years to pay it, or three years' worth of documentation we have to turn in to match. And in one of these, we're matching like $40,000. The other one, we're matching around $60,000. So we've got about $100,000 worth of equivalent work that we need to do to satisfy the waiver.
Well, the only thing I see on here is a mention of $61,625. I don't see a mention of a $40,000 figure.
There should be two of them. Don't you have two of them, two sets of paperwork?
Oh, okay. You're looking at, Roger?
One of them's on, what is it, 40, no, not 4550. Is it 4550? Hart's Creek Bridge?
Over there.
Yeah, Sandlin.
That's the sand.
Yes. Then the other one is Jimmy Bridge. 4754. That we removed the bridge and put the temporary cover in. As far as I know, that's the only last two that we have.
Yeah. We had, we did this back in the 90s. We had 32 bridges. Two of them ended up being annexed into the city, and I transferred all the paperwork and everything, so they got two bridges, free bridges, I guess you could say. And then, back then, it was 5% instead of 10%. But we did all the cleaning of the ditches, but just keep up with your cupboards and cleaning the ditches, and all that is in kind.
Right.
And the state really worked well with us on that. Get 32, over $8 million dollars in new bridges in this county.
Well, this is basically a million dollars' worth right here.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Especially Horse Creek down there.
Yeah, because this is, 10% is $40,000, and 10% $60,000, so they're $400,000, $600,000 worth of bridges.
All right, well, let me read. These two resolutions are very similar, but I'll identify the differences that set them apart, including the specific locations and dollar amounts. Whereas the federal off-system bridge program is administered by TechDOT to replace or rehabilitate structurally deficient and functionally obsolete bridges located on public roads and streets off the designated state highway system. And whereas Titus County, hereinafter referred to as the local government, owns a bridge located at Hart Creek on 4550, the national bridge inventory structure number and local designation number, which I won't read. And whereas a project to remedy the bridge is included in the currently approved program of projects as authorized by Texas Transportation Commission Minute Order Number, Control Section Job Number, and whereas the usual fund participation ratio is 80% federal, 10% state, 10% local government. And whereas Texas Administrative Code provides that under specified conditions, the 10% local government match participation requirement may be waived with an agreement by the local government to perform or cause to be performed an equivalent dollar amount of structural improvement work on other deficient bridges or deficient main lane cross drainage structures within its jurisdiction, such as a project of structural improvement work being referred to as an equivalent match program. And whereas the estimated local match participation requirement of the approved federal project is $61,625, hereinafter referred to as the participation waived project. Such participation requirement the local government proposes be waived in return to perform or cause to be performed equivalent match project structural improvement work. So we're agreeing to, instead of writing a $61,625 check, we have three years to do in-kind work to meet our 10% requirement.
Yeah.
So that is the first one. The second one is worded very similarly. However, I'll describe the particular bridge, which is located at Williamson Creek on County Road 4754. And this match amount is for $43,500. So these are two separate resolutions, which I will sign if you so approve these. And again, both are proposing in-kind match rather than check-writing match.
Would you be able to perform whatever that means?
Yeah, we can track all of our expenses, yeah. Well, I'm not sure what have they done in the past.
I kept up with all the work.
You've been doing it all along. I'm just not sure what reports you're saying.
I did all the paperwork.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
I would appreciate it if you could do it. I haven't thought of a way.
Well, what the state will do, they'll give you so much money if you're cleaning out ditches, you're putting in cupboards, you've got your price or your invoice, but you got to keep up with it.
Now, I'll have to sit up and do it for fun and track all of those expenses. Is there a way to add funds or not actually, or planning on tracking?
What'd y'all do in the past?
Oh, what's his name from Pittsburgh?
I don't know who you're talking about.
He helped with the federal fund.
Well, I would just start out with what we need to do before I get lost, and if I could get paid.
They had a guy come see me, and I did, he'd show me for, you know, keep up with hours, keep up with this, keep up with that, invoices, anything he had, and stuff like this. He'd come by, and I'd show it to him, and what it cost was. He okayed them all.
Okay. You got any examples of what you did?
Oh, I probably do, but I'd have to go back and look through my paperwork. Pretty good about keeping all of that stuff. In fact, y'all should have all the paperwork, Roger. Dale does.
Who does?
The state.
We didn't keep up with it here at the local office.
Y'all don't keep up, or you keep up with it in Atlanta?
Yeah, we've been in Atlanta.
I think I have copies of it all in here, or at my office one. I'll look for it.
Yeah, it'd be great if you'll see what kind of forms y'all actually filled out, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel again.
I tell you right now, it's a lot of paperwork.
Okay.
You haven't reported to Atlanta? Have you reported to?
Well, I kept-
We have phones from you.
Chip our local TechDOT. Every time we were doing on the bridge, it started, we started about '94, '95, and they just finished the last bridge last, year before last. It was 32 bridges. Two of them ended up in the city. I turned all the paperwork over to the city, and then they finished it.
And we'll need to find-
Well, see, they contract, all this is contracted out. We don't, we really, the only thing we got-
Yeah, but he's talking about our work, not our 10%.
Our part, our 10%. Well, back then, it was 5%.
Yeah, whatever it is, you have to track down the hours, that's some machine hours, not just some big material.
Right.
Most of it is not going to be material, right?
Yeah, most of it won't be. It's going to be, the only material we're going to have is coverage. Rest of it's going to be labor to put it in.
You're going to have to track that.
Well, would your machine hours match your labor hours each time, and you just apply a factor to the machine hours?
We don't track that with the paperwork. We just try to cut down on the guy's work.
No, I know, but I'm talking about whatever, if you have one machine hour, you're going to have one man hour, vice versa.
We do that with payment per time sheet. We have, I have an equipment sheet that we do.
Yeah. They'll tell you what that piece of equipment you can get paid for that for hours.
Yeah, it'd be based on the blue book rental rates, is what you can charge on equipment.
Should you let track this, right here?
Right.
So, well, he has this to do, you don't need to bill those anywhere?
I guess. Roger could, every time he does payroll, would be tracked it down, but he can send it over to us, and we can allocate after, we just don't go to the general, it's so much. Should be pulling your hours. It's going to be hours, so you can kind of have your salary.
Why can't he just keep a separate ledger that has nothing to do with our payroll that he turns in? I mean, why should y'all have to do anything?
Well, I know, I just want to make sure-
You'd have to be tracking on your W-2s, if they won't be able to-
Well, no, we can do like we did, we pay payroll, and then we reimburse it, maybe.
But there's no reimbursed, there's no money involved in this, and I don't see any reason for us to internally track it.
I just want to make sure-
Roger, I have a record to say-
Right.
And then I saw, I need to do that.
You put everything down that pertains to that road, cleaning out ditches, hauling the backhoe over there, the grader, driving it, the hands, you just keep up with all that. It's not that hard. It's just a lot of work to do.
We've never established a composite rate for our guys or anything like that. Anyway, I know the state had a composite rate for men and equipment when we sent them out, if we were going to charge the contractor.
If we can track the hours. If we just got it with, $7 an hour or whatever it is.
Okay, yeah, we can apply the blue book rental rates and keep up with how many hours we're working.
Because you're going to be cleaning out ditches, you're going to be putting in cupboards, you're going to be doing that, I promise you. You're going to do way more than what you're-
When will this start?
It says it in there, once that's approved, then it starts. We can start charging too.
Well, it took '94 to 2015, it took that long to do 32 bridges.
We just got two little old bridges here.
[laughing]
All right. Does that sound good to y'all? Let's approve these resolutions here. These are two different bridges. Motion is made by Commissioner Fields to approve this resolution. One, separate resolution, worded essentially the same, describing a different dollar amount and a different associated bridge. One being-
Do we need to do them separate, don't we, Judge? Or do them both together?
I think you can do them both together. This will be Resolution 2018-02 and 03. 2018-02, Joyce, will be for County Road 4550. Hart, excuse me, just call it County Road 4550. There's some more specific designation identifiers in here, if you want to pick those up in the minutes, but we'll call the 2018-02 be the 4550 project, and the 2018-03 will be the 4754 County Road project. So motion is made for approval of these resolutions.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we'll jump ahead to number seven, in case Roger has any input on this. This is Commissioner Fields has submitted a request to consider possibly approve a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit on the last half-mile of County Road 2850. Commissioner Fields?
Okay, Judge, this is on 2850. This is out by Tri-Lake. It's about 2.4 miles, something like that, to the very end. What has happened, we've got probably 10 homes, maybe 12 homes there at the end, and it has a, well, a little more than a 90-degree turn, and then you go up and make another turn. It's really a horseshoe road around the lake coast loop. It goes north, the water goes up in there. Then the very last turn is a 90-degree turn. There's fixing to be 10 houses built down there. That's going to put about 20 homes plus down there at the very end, and it'd be more. It's a dead-end road. There's a road that tees into it about halfway down, and that's, and we're putting it at the very end. Talk to the people down there, and they would like to see it lower to that limit because more and more people are getting down there, and they've got some kids down there, and that's starting to drive, and they're driving way too fast for that road. And you looked at it, Roger, and I don't think, I think 25 is fine. I don't-
And I think there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, too. I know when I was down there, an old man come down there in his scooter, coming down the middle of the road, too, so.
And two, it's the very end down there is where they're going to build those 10 homes.
Right.
And they're fixing to start on them, but-
And, you know, he's concerned about traffic now, but he's really concerned when they get, add those 10 homes down there. That's pretty much going to double the traffic from their houses.
To me, it'd be a safety deal, and I think we need to do it, and I make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fields for this reduction in the, or posted 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, last half-mile of County Road 2850.
It's probably closer to three or four tenths. It's, Roger, where the road starts turning, the rest of the road's pretty straight. There's a few little-
Yeah, it needs to start there when you first start seeing the lake.
When you start seeing the lake, that's when you need to put the speed limit, because it goes to the left, and it goes back to the right, and then it goes back to the left. It's kind of like a snack. But all the people I talk to down there are for it. They want it.
I'll second.
Second is made by, who said that? Second is made by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of a disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Roger, I think that's all for you.
All right.
Move on to item number five. It's time for annual approval of a repair and maintenance contract for our county-wide video surveillance system. Dennis Newman, Newman Electronics, has installed all this equipment and has maintained it thus far, and so it is time for annual renewal. And the price for an annual renewal on this maintenance contract is $5,800. Let me run down a few of the things that he does. A lot of his responsibility occurs on a monthly basis, such as examine the five digital video recorders and the associated cameras at the courthouse, the annex, the justice center, the tax and elections office, and adult probation. Check for correct recordings of each DVR and that the network connections are correct. Ensure each camera is operational, aimed and focused correctly. Repair any minor fault or problem found with any camera or DVR. In the event a severe problem is found, such as a camera found dead or serious problem with the operation of the DVR or amplifiers, it will be reported to Paul Lindsay and an estimate given at that time. Every six months, we'll clean the DVR fans, vents, filters, replace any defective filters. If necessary, check wiring connections on the cameras, clean camera lenses, inspect camera housings. For insect nests, spider webs, remove, then clean housing lens. I had suggested or asked about a multi-year contract, and we decided to keep it at one year in case we add any new cameras this year. We're talking about some additional external cameras that would drive this cost up, so this one will expire in one year. This is just a one-year agreement here on this. $5,800 to be paid upfront to Newman Electronics. $5,800 to be paid upfront to Newman Electronics for maintenance. Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite for approval. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six, here we have once again another piece of property that had previously gone to a tax sale but was not sold. And we now have someone that has stepped up and asked to purchase this piece of property. Let me tell you a bit about it. From Tim Taylor, a bid for the purchase of the above referenced tract of land. We'll call this lot 11, Block 231A, Mount Pleasant, that was formerly in the name of Archie Selman. This is, this property was previously struck off at a delinquent tax auction in April of 17 to the city of Mount Pleasant as trustee for the taxing entities. We've gotten a bid from Arturo Vargas and Maria de Jesus Vargas. These, they are adjoining landowners. The city has accepted a bid for $3,000 and will sell the property with the consent of the other entities involved. The sales price for the above lot is for less than the judgment amount of $12,734 and the appraisal value at the time of the suit, $34,738. Therefore, before the sale can become final, consent of your entity is necessary. The appraised value including, the appraised value included the value of a house in the amount of $28,000. So again, of that $34,700, $28,006 was the value of a house. That house has since been condemned by the city and will be removed prior to the conveyance. The property is located at 902 Arizona. So I was giving you those details so that you didn't think we were selling for $3,000, something that somebody thought was worth $34,700. The majority of that, in fact, all but about $6,000 was associated with that house that has deteriorated to the point where it's been condemned by the city. And in fact, the city is going to raise that house and completely remove it as part of this deal, leaving basically a vacant lot with no improvements on it whatsoever that they have offered $3,000. The city has accepted that.
Make a motion that we okay that sale.
Commissioner Fields makes a motion to approve this sale as one of the participating taxing entities.
Second.
Second is by Commissioner Parker. If you're, support this sale, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We will get that signed and get that turned back to the Tim Taylor and the city. That brings us down to our oral and written reports.
Carl, what do we have in our fund? The college and the college road?
Page two, page three. 3 million 520, second line of page three.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It's the second line of page three, 3 million 520, 70.
Okay. 3 million 520,000, 170.
For your information, I did submit a Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority project for that same project that we attempted two years ago and narrowly missed out on that money. This was, I just got all the paperwork submitted a week ago Friday. And the justification there is to give us some additional funds with, to match with that $3.5 million to purchase right-of-way and utility relocation. It's probably a little bit far from when that actual work will begin to meet net RMA's requirements, but not necessarily. I did not expound on the timing of that project, but we would likely not start right-of-way purchase until maybe even early fiscal year 2020, there's fall of next year. But this, this money will be awarded by September of this year and I would think they would notify the winner of this project here within the next couple of months. So there's a possibility. It never hurts to try, so I tried. We'll see what happens.
What about right-of-way money on 271 North?
We used all that, I believe.
Okay, we did use all that. I, I thought we did, but I couldn't remember.
Because that was called 271.
Right. That, that, we were able to use some of that because that, that's all it could be spent on was 271.
We just used up the 471.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the oral and written reports.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker for approval. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number nine, our treasurer's report, please, Cheryl. toward the end of the fiscal year? So we're four years into it now, including this year.
Yeah, 12,000 here.
How much do we put in that each year?
12,000 here, 48,000.
Okay. All right, need a motion when you're ready. Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the treasurer's report. Second by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any budget amendments today for item 10?
That's one, number 20. This involves the water truck. What I, what we did is we took the proceeds from the equipment sales, they had $22,220 and we just applied it to the water truck instead of using other funds. That's pretty common, that we've done that in the past whenever anybody sells equipment. Which it wasn't budgeted originally to sell the equipment, so I had to put that in and then I just allocated it over to pay for the water truck with that money.
Will we see a budget amendment on the water trucks? Are there any...
Well, that's, that other line item is the water truck. I'm adding, I'm adding, adding into the water truck. Water truck out of that money, add it to money from somewhere else.
Okay. Just takes care of that, gives you the money in there to write the check when she, when he's ready today or tomorrow.
That's right.
All right, any questions on that sale of assets? That was that $22,220 net sale on that piece of equipment at the Ritchie auction. All right, somebody want to approve that single item there?
Make a motion, we approve the budget amendment?
Budget amendment. Number 20 is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fields. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, number 11, sign pay orders and approve paying our bills.
Make a motion, pay our bills.
That motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And it's seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 12 is closing comments. Hopefully you all got a rather lengthy and detailed memo from me that was a copy of correspondence from Bob Bass on our Loop lawsuit matter. Very informative. He continues to keep me updated on a couple of time a week basis. They've had a few more depositions. He's still hoping we could seriously discuss mediation between now and the trial date, which is I believe scheduled in October, September or October. If anything noteworthy comes along, I'll forward you copies of that, but that is ongoing and Bob Bass is working diligently and doing a tremendous job. This Thursday, for those of you that ever do that, Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Business Meeting at 7:00 AM on this Thursday. If you'd like to attend that, that's always a good opportunity. That's all I have. Commissioner Riddle? Commissioner Fields?
Motion.
Commissioner Applewhite?
I'd like to apologize to Jeff Cates of, for the last meeting we had, the way he was, was brought about and everything because he was asked to come up here and I was considering him to, we need to consider him to put him over the shop. You know, that way he can have a front line to whatever he needs to do. And if we have any kind of money situation we need to talk about, we need to talk about it in, in closed meetings on individual employees.
Okay.
I agree with, with Dana on the same thing. I want to make a public apology to him. And also, I'd like to thank the sheriff and them for getting some of my roads picked up out there. I appreciate them getting that done. I'd had, had some complaints out there and they got out there and got it picked up and I appreciate it.
Okay. Have you gotten a bill yet on our dumpster costs for the cleanup day?
I have so big this week, it's letting me know.
Okay, don't have that yet. All right, if you do get it, I'll shoot, put that back on the agenda for next time. If not, I'll continue to hold off on that. All right, if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you, everyone.